Hello and welcome. You're viewing the Citizens Journalist Podcast Mesa County Compass. That brings you the news that you can use from a different point of view. I'm Ruth.
I'm Lisa.
And together we are Mesa County Compass. Our goal is to create an informed, current, active citizenry armed with facts. We will be covering what's new, what's new to you, what it means to you, what you can do about it, and provide you access to the decision makers when we can. Good afternoon. We're here with Mesa County Compass and today makes marks our last podcast for our city council candidates. Alexis Hisaroth is with us today and she's going to be explaining her stance and why she ran. And first of all, a little bit about herself. So if you'd just let us know a little bit about yourself Alexis, why, how you came about to decided to run for this?
Yeah, so I have been in Grand Junction for 10 years. I moved here to get a job with the United States Geological Survey, where I measured stream flow on our beautiful rivers here in Colorado. I decided to go this path because when I went to school, I got a degree in environmental studies with an emphasis on water. I was able to get my amazing degree because I joined the military when I was 17 years old. I did a tour of duty in 2008 to 2009 and that gave me some benefits, including the post nine 11 GI bill. So they paid for all of my schooling, which is really amazing, so I don't have any college debt. I worked for the USGS for seven years and then went and moved into the nonprofit sector. And I taught kids the importance of our water resources and all of the beautiful things that live inside of our rivers on the western slope of Colorado. I moved back to Grand Junction in 2023. I was gone for two years and bought a house from a friend, which I'm very, very lucky. I got it off market and she gave me a cat, a three cat discount, which was my unhoused cats I was talking about earlier. So I have to take care of them for the remainder of their lives. So she gave me a little discount so I would take care of them.
And you would have done it anyway.
I would have done it anyway, yeah. And I'm just very happy to have a house in Grand Junction because we all know how hard it is sometimes to buy a house here.
Exactly.
I moved into the service industry after I got back because it's kind of hard to find a job right now that pays really well. And I get paid like a decent wage to work in the service industry. I work on Fifth and Colorado, so some of the parking has been a challenge for downtown employees. We spend a decent amount of money just going to work every day. So me and my coworker were talking a couple of months ago and we were like, what are we going to do about this? We can't just keep complaining about it. Maybe someone needs to do something. And on Friday at four o'clock, we, I was like, you know what? I'm just going to go to, I'm going to go to City Hall and I'm going to get a petition and I'm just going to get myself on the ballot if I can. And I spent that weekend walking around my neighborhood, canvassing and getting petitions, getting people to sign my petition so I could turn it in by five or four o'clock on Monday. And I had a little help from my friends and we got it all done and we got my name on the ballot, so.
Okay, well, just, just a little bit deeper on each one of those things. So what branch of the military were you in?
I was in the Army National Guard for 13 years.
Wow, and you just decided to do that? So when you were in the National Guard, did you have another job while you were doing that or going to school?
I was going to school. I first had, you know, I went and got my associate's degree. During that time period, I worked at a bank for a little bit. I worked at a hardware store for a little bit. And then I did all my National Guard duties on top of that, along with getting my degree.
On the weekends and in that, okay.
Have you let your National Guard go by the wayside now or are you still?
So I got out in 2018. When I moved to Colorado, I was down in Montrose at the unit there. And they wanted to give me my E7, but they didn't really have a spot. They had a spot in Denver and I did not really feel like commuting back and forth to Denver. I don't like driving there in the winter either. It's pretty dangerous. So my time was coming to an end, so I just decided to say, you know what? I've done 13 good years. I had, I was working with the federal government already, the United States Geological Survey. So I decided it was time to move on to different things.
Okay, and so then with the geological survey, you said you did that for 10?
Six, almost seven years, from 2015 to 2021.
And what did you learn about water that was so significant that you went on to teach? That you felt was real significant in Colorado, especially the western slope?
Right, the scarcity of it that we have. And you know, something that I learned while I worked at Roaring Fort Conservancy was that we are all downstream and just how important it is to make sure that we are conserving our water and treating it very well so that when we have used it and we put it back into the river, that it can go downstream and help somebody else out.
So how do you feel like Grand Junction fits into this plan?
Of resource management or protecting our water resources?
Particularly water resources.
Water's always been a big deal here. And they have always said it was scarce and they've always been mad about Denver.
They always say, "Take my wife, but don't take my water."
So I think what City Council did recently by helping, you know, gain, get some money for the Shoshone water rights was a super important and a really good idea. If there's any way that the western slope can keep more water on the western slope, we need to do that.
Well, and there's a lot of it that's done through treaties and through agreements that they've got that should protect us. And that's always something that are more.
We have superior water rights too versus other places. So Grand Junction, you know, we always need to be looking towards the future to make sure that we aren't overextending ourselves. But I feel like Grand Junction's done a good job of setting themselves up.
Well, and Yew Water too. Yew Water has been brilliant about how they've taken care of things for years and years. Also, it was kind of interesting to me that there's so much of the city that's moving. And I can understand it maybe downtown with the water being more expensive because you have to use city water as opposed to ditch water, yew water. And what Matt Soper, who is also a farmer and a representative, he said, "You know, using the water is not hurting the water table." That is his opinion. He said that, you know, you're, you're going in and it's going down into the water table. It is flowing out and you have a better, you know, you've got some of your canopy you talk about and you've got more cooler temperatures, especially in the summer versus taking it, all of it out and just having desert escaping like a lot of people do.
Yeah, that's nice to hear though from a farmer, for sure.
That's, you know, and I wondered what your opinion about that was.
Yeah, I don't know the whole geomorphology of our groundwater system in Grand Junction. When I worked for the United States Geological Survey and did my work at the nonprofit, we mostly focused on surface water. And, you know, keeping water in the river definitely helps refill our aquifers and things like that. So we just need to make sure that we're keeping water. It just trickles down into it slowly.
Because I'm a water, well, she's more water person than I am.
I've been looking at senior water rights for years. My, my background is ranching from way back when. And it was very important that we conserved and used wisely.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I remember growing up, my parents did not let me take long. I lived in northern Illinois too, like they don't have a scarcity of water there. But I grew up, you know, taking very short showers and being a very conservative with our water use. And that just actually kind of just helped me when I moved out here because I still take like four or five minute showers and that's about it. So, and you know, we use the dishwasher because they're known to save more water than hand washing. So all sorts of little things I learned when I was a kid.
I don't believe that.
That's all right.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can prove that to you.
It depends on, you know, how much water.
How many people you have and how much water and electricity. How much electricity you're using when you're using that instead. Because I know our dishwasher, if you run it through the smart cycle and it's new, it's three hours and 20 minutes. And I'm like, that's a long time to wash a dish.
Mine runs for an hour.
That's what I put it on. I put it on the 58 minute wash.
Now then, you can shorten that time by when it goes onto its heat cycle, let it warm up and then stop it.
Yeah.
I've also heard running your hot water before you run your dishwasher also helps its efficiency. That was kind of a new one.
Yeah, could be.
It does indeed.
What's your next thing? We don't know anything about your family either, so we know you have cats, three of them.
I have two, two indoor, three outdoor.
Three outdoors, five.
Yep, yeah, five total cats and then, you know, the ones that run around the neighborhood, including a raccoon who lives in the sewers, which is pretty funny. But just me and my partner, I have a sister who lives in Illinois and a niece who also lives in Illinois. My father lives in Montana and my mother lives in Illinois as well. My grandpa, he's 96 years old. We recently sold his house in Illinois and he's been bouncing back and forth between my aunts. And he actually might come and hang out with me here soon, which would be nice. But yeah, my family's kind of all over, all over the United States, so. But it's just me and my sister and my two parents and they, they live in Illinois and Montana, so.
Okay, don't get to see him as much as many.
My dad was actually here recently. My mom likes to come to her, if she can get out here and hike the monument, that's going to be what she's going to do every single day.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, she loves it here.
That's nice.
Okay, well, at many forums that we have been to and have watched and whatnot like that, you talk about cost effective. And what I would like to know is what is your best definition of cost effective?
My definition of cost effective, I feel like that's, you know, looking at the budget and all the expenses that we have and trying to figure out how we can make the best decision with the money that we have.
So have you looked at the budget?
I've looked at it very briefly.
And what did you discover?
You know, I'd have to sit down and look at it a little bit more. We, I've, you know, I was in one meeting and I got to see it a little bit. It seems like we have a lot going on and of course, everybody has mentioned that this is going to be a very lean year. So we need to make sure that we're prioritizing needs carefully.
So are you going to be able to do that since the budget's already been allocated for this year?
When I'm on City Council, I will do my best to make sure that I'm making the most cost effective decisions for our city.
But how do you do that when it's already been allocated? I mean, what would you do to?
If you saw wasteful spending, what would you do to pull it back?
Yeah, well, I'd have to talk to the city manager. I'd have to talk to all of my city council members and then I'd talk to the community. And we would together try and prioritize solutions that work best for everybody.
So do you feel like you, that's kind of what we have heard from city council people is they really, even they don't have that much say because we have a city manager system.
Right.
So how do you work with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just being open minded and effectively communicating with the entire, all of the stakeholders and everybody that you have to, you know, try and get the most information from so you can make really, really good decisions. I, I'd love to, you know, hear what you think would be a possible solution. We have to be very collaborative, so.
Well, one of, one of the things that we know is that the agenda's set by the city manager. And now this is the way it's been, but it would take something to be able to change it. Set by the city manager, the mayor and the mayor pro temp. And the other people on council don't get to have an item put on unless the mayor and the mayor pro temp agree with that and the city manager. And it had been at one point that only the mayor and the mayor pro temp could meet with the city manager. So that makes it pretty closed. And your idea of always getting the stakeholders feedback, how do you do that?
Well, I think with regard to what your question is and trying to maybe change that methodology, I feel like the city council currently and our current city manager are very open to looking at, you know, changing things if we need to. And we might have some new council members on here very shortly. And they might have different ideas of what really works for them as a council. So moving forward, I think, I think that they would be very reasonable. And if we wanted, you know, we talk, we have council workshops all the time. If we wanted to take a step back, rework something, relook at something, make sure that it's working for everybody who's on council now, I don't think that there would be any objections to, you know, taking a better look at maybe a way to do things that makes it more open for everybody.
Then why haven't they done that?
Um, I'm not sure. I haven't been in all of their meetings. I have.
Have you seen in the meetings you've been in that they were willing to do that?
Actually, I have.
Which meeting?
Uh, the most, I was in the most recent one. It was, what was it, a month ago maybe or three weeks ago I was in one?
March 5th, I think, was the last one.
Maybe it was that one. And they did seem like they were willing to talk about it. But they wanted to make sure that the, the new council members also got a say.
And do you know what the discussion was about and what they were doing?
Um, they're just trying to make sure that going forward, council members feel like they can agendize items that fit most of city council and their beliefs.
Okay, but then you said that you also wanted to have the community's involvement because that was one of the things that Ken Scissors had said is, you know, with, with some of the decisions that had been made, and I'm going to go to fourth and fifth first because that kind of fits with what you were talking about in the parking as well. He said when we, he was on the committee that did the Ted's Plan for, or the Ped Plan, I'm sorry, for the pedestrian and bike. And he said, "There was nothing of fourth and fifth in the plan we proposed to city council. None of that was in there." And he said, "So I was very surprised when it came back and we had that protected bike lane because all they had put in there was, yeah, we need a bike lane somewhere in there, but not what they had done and the expense that they'd gone to." He was pretty surprised. And Laura Cole was surprised when she said, "We talked about using that ARPA money and the Resource Center was nowhere on any of the suggestions that we had made." So I'm, I'm questioning if the city council listens so well and involves the stakeholders, why haven't they?
Um, I can't answer for them, but I will tell you that when I'm on city council, I will listen and I will make sure that we are doing what is best to make sure that if something is an issue and it's, of course, you know, something that we can agendize, that we really look into, making sure that it makes it on there.
So what would you do? What would be your idea to get out to the stakeholders exactly what is going on? Because right now, as it has been over the last, we've been working with this, what, two, three years now, trying to make sure that we know everything that's happening and we don't. Things are sprung on us all the time and we're in the middle of it. How would you suggest that anybody else that doesn't have direct knowledge like we do be able to find out anything that's happening within the city? Uh, it just seems to be a big dark hole that things go into and all of a sudden this grand plan pops out of and there we are.
Well, I know that the city has to be, has to approach things at a very pragmatic, in a pragmatic way. And you can't say that you want to, you know, put, build something in a certain location if you don't have all the information already. Like if you don't have deeds and all the necessary info, it's not a good idea to go and tell everybody about it if you're not even sure that it's going to be happening. But I think that we can also always increase our transparency. And if the people of our community think in increased transparency in these certain issues would be helpful, then I think we need to look at that.
Do you think that people would think that or?
I'm not sure. We'd have to ask the community.
You don't think?
But if, if you.
Have they been responding to city council, do you think, about things they like or don't like that are going on or?
Personally, I've received a lot of emails about stuff already and I'm not even on city council. So I feel like our community does care a lot. And I think if we increase transparency and that's not going to be a harmful thing, that's for sure.
No, shouldn't be. Well, I think you'll get more cooperation if people know what's going on and they know, if it's something that they desire. How do you know what the community wants and that you're representing what the community wants? Because you're running, you, to represent everyone, but you're running specifically from this district. So how do you know what the people want so far? And do you know what everybody wants or do you only know people that want you to be elected want?
As a human being, I think a lot of us all want the same thing. And since I've been knocking on doors, I don't know whose doors I'm going to be knocking on when I go. And I knocked, I knocked on 50 yesterday, just yesterday, I knocked on 50 doors. So, and what I will tell you is.
And then did you come home and have a glass of wine? No, I'm just kidding.
I had to go to a city council workshop and then I went to a meeting. So no, I did, I did get some wine later on in the day. But yeah, knocking on doors has been super eye opening for me because I am learning that a lot of our residents all just want the same thing. And that's, you know, access to a beautiful downtown. They want safety in their neighborhoods. They want slower speeds. They want, you know, affordable housing for their children. Like all, most of us people in Grand Junction, we all strive for the same things. And I think that's a really awesome thing and it's very grounding to know that we all have, we all have, we all share a lot of common ground. We all have a lot of things in common. And there are some things that divide people, but when you get down to the basics, we all want very similar things. And I, you know, I represent a lot of people in this community that have struggled to find housing, who have struggled to find, you know, high paying jobs. I'm, I'm a veteran. I have a, a science degree. It should be fairly easy for me to find a high paying job.
But not in Grand Junction.
But it's hard in Grand Junction, so I empathize with a lot of these people. I, yeah, I feel like I am pretty, and I work downtown, which is another thing. And sometimes, you know, you go into a conversation thinking you have an idea of what the people want and they tell you something different. But it, it gets down back to the basics of people want safety. People want their neighborhoods. They want to keep their cultural heritage of Grand Junction alive and, yeah.
I would say, most of those are right. When you, when you talk safety, what kind of safety are you talking?
Vehicle safety, bike safety, safety for people. Like I get off work late sometimes and I have to walk to my car. Safety, like just increased lights downtown. There's a lot of little things that can increase safety. But I, I personally think Grand Junction is a pretty safe spot. That's why I've lived here for as long as I have.
You were talking, just mentioned just then about lighting, more lighting downtown. What do you think of the new dark skies initiative that's being set forth here?
Well, I'm also a birder. So I, I totally think that whatever we can do to make sure that, I mean, there's, and there's a lot of research on this and I won't go into specifics, but there are so many different kinds of lights that you can install that do not disrupt things like that and do not disrupt people's like, uh, circadian rhythms. So there's, there's all sorts of really cool things that you can do to, to increase lights, but also not affect the environment.
Have you been in a dark sky city?
Uh, I feel like I've been, well, I've been down in Ridgeway and I think Ridgeway is one of them.
I know that Flagstaff is because they have a low observatory there and it's very dark. I mean, you cannot see to drive around. It's.
Grand Junction at night with clouds is also pretty dark.
Yeah, not, not like that.
Unless you're going on the I-70 business, 6:30 at night, coming home from your. Meeting brief that we had got, I ran into somebody, so.
Oh, boy.
Because it was dark.
Yeah, it was, it can be dark, but you know.
Yeah, so where do, where do you think that there is? And there's, what do you think is the cause of most of the division that you see between the different groups? Why, why is there that division?
I feel like we'd have to go into a basic psychology lesson to figure that one out. And I think that, you know, maybe it comes from places of fear. It comes from fear of losing something. It comes from fear of, you know, yeah, maybe it's a scarcity. Fear of losing something, fear of, you know, you're worried about your children. There's all sorts of things that could be the reasons behind that. But I'm sure the basics of it probably go back to fear.
Losing your way of life.
Potentially, yeah.
That's huge, especially now. And I bring up again the changes to Fourth and Fifth Street, the possible changes to Seventh Street. The more talking about more changes on North Avenue. They're also now still bringing back up again the 29 road interchange. What do you feel about that?
The 29 road interchange? Well, I would actually be really interested in sitting down. I have watched the video. I have, I'd be interested in sitting down and talking more about, about it with the stakeholder groups because there are just so many details about the interchange that I do not know. And I don't want to speak about things that I'm not 100% knowledgeable on. It would just be, yeah, it wouldn't be very, wouldn't be fair for me to say anything about it because it seems like a lot of people who know way more than I do are saying that it's not feasible. So we, I need to trust their instincts, but we can all do our due diligence to look more into that.
I think due diligence is very prudent at this point. And I know C D O, C D O T is against it for now. But as we grow, there are going to have to be changes made and that may be one of them that might be necessary down the road.
Yep. Well, you list yourself, you said, one of the things about you is you're a moderate. So what does that mean?
That means I feel like you can be a really great leader without being one side or the other in that if you put yourself in a corner by saying you're one side or the other, you're not actually being a good listener because you might be tone deaf. You might be totally excusing another person's opinion, which, or the facts. You can be, if you're more open minded and you're willing to listen to everybody and if you come at an argument or you come at some sort of decision making process without any sort of bias, I think that's a really good place to start. So being a moderate person is making sure that you are not being judgmental and you are, you have the ability to listen to both sides of the argument.
And, and what do you mean by being judgmental?
Um, I mean, there, we, we all know, I mean, and I guess I shouldn't generalize. There are certain beliefs that each, you know, Republican versus Democrat, there's a lot of beliefs that we think certain people have based on the fact they're Republican or Democrat, Republican or Democrat. And I think.
Or conservative.
Or conservative or liberal. I think by putting yourself into those two categories, you can assume something about someone that might not be true.
So then on the current city council, do you think that all of them are moderates? Or is that your opinion from what you've watched?
It's a nonpartisan race for sure. And I believe that, I would love to believe that everybody on city council currently has the opened mindedness to listen to both sides of the argument. I don't know if they're Republican or conservative or liberal or not. I just know that when I speak to them, they're all are very helpful and they all have a willingness to learn. And I don't know them all very personally, but they just seem like generally good people.
I would suggest that they need to have the interest of Grand Junction at heart and not their own personal.
I think that's a good way to start, yeah. Think about the broader aspect and not your personal beliefs, yeah.
Okay, now I'm going to bounce around again. The Resource Center, that's a big issue, of course, as we all know because the Resource Center has to move by the 15th of April. Or at least at this point, they're saying it has to be moved, maybe an extension. I don't know what's going to happen there. How do you feel about all of that? And what, what would you do personally, or not personally? I guess I should say, how would you like to lead the people into a new housing situation for unhoused people?
Yeah, well, I think collaboration is key. And I was in the workshop yesterday for a little bit. And, you know, I think it is important to remember that city council are not experts on our unhoused situation. And going forward, we need to make sure that we are supporting our nonprofits as much as possible with whatever they need so that they can do the best that they can. The biggest thing that we heard yesterday is that unhoused people want to be in houses and I.
And how does the Resource Center, which is not permanent?
It's a day center.
Yeah, it's day.
Well, and it's only a day center. But I think, I think the move there is then to try and figure out how we can move these people into houses. And they have all sorts of talks that they want to move the Resource Center if they can, put it into, you know, reach out to some church community groups and see if they can help in any way. But just trying to make sure that, you know, we are going to maybe have a, a lessening of some services, but we need to make sure that they still have access to the most important services and.
Which are?
Um, well, right now it seems like they want housing, so we need to figure out how they can be housed.
But that wasn't what the Resource Center was designed for.
Yeah, it was to provide showers, food. I think food is a very important one. Actually, yesterday they, they mentioned that their, their wants for nutritious food has actually gone down because they are getting that more often now, which is really nice. So making sure that they still have these toilet services, these shower services. So, making sure that they still have these toilet services, these shower services, um, and, you know, nutritious meals.
But they did have access to all those things before, they even created the resource center.
Yeah, and it has increased, it has increased the amount of, it has increased the. Let's see, what's the word? They have more access now and it has increased the amount of, it has actually lessened the need for our homeless population, so.
And I, I don't know where the statistics are on that because Jody, uh, who was on, she had. I don't think that there was anybody that wasn't getting a shower that wanted one from the day center. The Catholic Outreach, the, that was, you know, like you've got a little triangle there. They said, that was one of the things Bev Lampley said is there is more than enough access to food in Grand Junction. And this is all prior to the resource center and so. I guess my question is, couldn't that money be better utilized somewhere else or change the way those services are provided?
Potentially.
Also with saying, okay, if we're doing this, this is something that we need, you know, like, um. A work fair or something like that, you, you need to be helping yourself as well. Cause I know Bill had thought, and I think that that.
Clarify Bill.
Bill Wade.
Thank you.
I think that what he thought originally was that they don't trust us and if we provide a low barrier. To them where there's no expectation met that they had to meet and they could, they could have drugs, they could be using drugs, as long as they weren't violent. We wanted them in so that the resources are, are right there, which would not have been worked at Catholic Outreach. Because they say, you, you can't be using and you, you can come in, I mean, people could come in and they had been drinking, but. You couldn't be as much as you were there, so, and I think you realize that really didn't work.
Yeah, I mean, no one has figured out our homeless populate, I mean, no one has figured out the homeless challenge, it is. It is only getting worse because our economy has been struggling. So, it goes back down to trying to figure out the basics. And we do know some, you know, some things that homeless people are more, un- unhoused people are more expensive. Unhoused than they are in housing, so we need to, I think, make sure that we are just trying to figure out the most. Practical ways to get this group of people into homes so that they can. Um, I'm not sure if it's the city's jobs, uh, the city needs to make sure that we're working with nonprofits as well. Because they're the experts, again, we're not the experts, we, we can provide funding and we can help with grants, but. We are not experts and I would not say that I'm an expert in trying to, you know, figure out this crisis that has. You know, is all over the world.
So, what's the difference to you then in, um, because many of the people talk about, not so much. The homeless population is a different population for homes than the people that are asking for affordable housing. And starter homes. Because that's where you're creating a, many problems is people can't afford their first home. And you were saying that even if that was a challenge for you, if you hadn't been real fortunate. So what do you do with that?
We need to. I mean, this is, this is, uh, and I feel like, I feel like, you know. It's really easy to try and blame a single entity for this crisis, but it is. Again, the affordability crisis is plaguing the United States in general, this isn't a new thing.
And Ireland, I heard yesterday, they have, they have a problem with it too.
Yeah, so, I mean, it would be cool if Grand Junction could think of an out of the box idea to try and. Increase housing for people like me, that's part of the reason why I'm running. So that we can maybe have somebody in city council who has a little more experience with that, has. You know, had to deal with the challenges of getting into a first home and having a VA loan. I used a VA loan to get into my house and it's, it's still a challenge for a lot of people. There's, it's a challenge for a lot of people I work with in the service industry, um, and we all work very hard. But I don't think that there's, you know, one thing that we can do, I think, again, it's gonna be a team effort. And our city is a really big team and we have a lot of people that I think have really good ideas and could. If we have more collaboration, I think we can figure out some, some, some answers to these questions.
And who would you collaborate with specifically?
You know, you have to, you of course, get all the stakeholders that are a part of this, builders, developers, the city has to be involved, I'm sure. Um, maybe we could talk with some small businesses, I feel like there's a lot of out of the box ways that we could come up. Or in even nonprofits with some, some housing, uh, housing that fits the budget. For people like me.
Okay, so, were you to become part of the city council. What would you think about having town hall meetings where you get? Feedback from all of the stakeholders, not just specific groups that happen to pop in here and there?
So, I will say, in, I guess I can ask you this question too, do you think that? Meetings like that are productive?
I do.
Okay, I, I am kind of a more of a one on one person. And I think small group settings are sometimes more productive, I have seen. I mean, I've been in a lot of forums and they have been very productive too, as long as we, you know, maintain decorum, but I think. The, like, again, the more different kinds of people you have in the room, the better the answers are gonna be. And they're going to have very different perspectives and be able to bring different kinds of knowledge.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I think the town halls, I think the difference in that, the one and one, I think the one and one you can never get rid of. And I think what Ruth is talking about primarily is, is again, you know, I know you're not on city council, so you can't say, but if you, you've been to a workshop. And you can't say anything. And you've been to where a city council meeting and you have three minutes to state an opinion on something. With no, they're, they're not supposed to respond, so. The town hall I can see as being something where people could interrelate and they could come with a question and say, this is my question and have.
You can't bring anger to that.
No, yeah.
A civilized. Discussion. Often brings many brilliant ideas and I think that if we were to expand. Our listening base to everybody, this would be a good way to have it, so that's kind of what I wanted your opinion on.
Yeah, I think collaboration is key.
And way before stuff starts, because that, that kind of has tended to be the problem.
Yeah, prior proper planning.
Even Ken Caesar said, fourth and fifth, he said, I found out about it at the same time that you did, when it, I read it in the paper. So, that, that, that does not show good collaboration prior to that. And, you know, I don't know if you're aware, but, um, you know, Cody said that there's like four hundred and fifty pages of reading. A week that they have and it comes on Friday and they have their meeting on Monday and so, again. I think, don't you think that's a little much to have to, I mean, just for anybody to have to read?
No, I mean, uh, you know, people ask me why I do this, that, why I'm deciding to do this, because sometimes.
Because you don't know.
It's a thankless job a lot of the time and you don't make a, you don't make any money. Being on city council, but it's, it's the dedication to, to. Knowing that if you collaborate and if you wanna make the city a better place, then. It's tough, these are not easy answers, if they were, then we would have figured them out by now.
Well, I, I, with the four hundred and fifty, it was not the lack of dedication, I'm thinking the necessity. Of something needing to be four hundred and fifty pages.
Yeah.
That seems to be, what are you writing about? That's way too much.
I love simplicity and I love efficiency, in any way that I can make that happen. I will go that way, I like to work smarter, not harder, so, that's me personally.
And, and make it, you know, it doesn't need to be a thesis, it just needs to be an outline.
Yeah, yeah. Talking points.
Yeah, something that, um, so we've done the unhoused. And there was, if there was one issue that you thought needed more funding, you said. More for our community development department and what do you see the community development department doing? That they're not doing right now.
Yeah, and I don't know the ins and outs of that and I'm not in community development, but. I feel like, um, any way that we can make it easier for people. To turn in sufficient packets to make the development process easier, I know that they have also, maybe it was the planning department, but. They've been having some staffing changes and, you, I think they're, you know, kind of getting back on into a groove right now, but it's been a bit of a struggle, so. Just making it easier for people to start development and I know that that's been, a lot of my candidates, friends have. You know, shared the same thing, I'm trying to build this and it's been very difficult and I'm trying to do this and it's, you know, I'm getting. Like, I have to go there and check in on it and then they tell me something has been, you know. So, yeah, just, again, efficiency, thinking, working smarter and not harder, trying to prioritize. These, you know, make it easy as possible for these people to get this stuff done because. And you know, faster is not always the best way and, but we need to make sure it's a smooth process, it makes sense. It's something that you can do without, you know, needing ten people to get eyes on the document.
Or make it more expensive by, if you have to hold on to property and you can't develop it and you've got a loan. You have to have more money to start out with to be able to even do that, than other people might have to have.
Yeah, anywhere we can streamline and just make it easier for people is, is what we need to do and I'm. Yeah, we, we'll have to talk with the planning department and the city and.
See, I, I thought maybe community development, you were looking at something totally different on. Because I thought, well, community development, I di- didn't realize you were talking planning.
Uh, planning to community, I mean, I guess it kinda goes hand in hand, cause we're trying to develop, we're trying to develop Grand Junction. I think community development also, I guess, can go in hand in hand with just making sure that we are reaching out to the community and. Making sure that they have input on what kind of developments happen.
So, what would you say, cause, and, and I did this with Ken, Cody, all of them. One fourth of our population is retired people, how, how do you see them being reached and those? Needs being addressed and, and do you know what their needs might be?
Um, I am not a retired person, so I do not know the needs, I, I know that most people. That are retired are on, you know, strict budgets and. You know, I think. They're also a group of people that has more time to come out to certain things, so if. Or we can go to them, whichever is easier, but I feel like our retired community has. Has a little bit more time than some of us to be able to interact and give feedback on things.
I guess it depends on who you're looking at.
Mobility is a huge thing for retired folks, that's a general rule, anybody over seventy. Yeah.
Yeah, and you know what, that's also another good thing, it's like, why don't we ask them? Why don't we ask them, how, what's the best way for us to reach you, do you want mail? Do you want us to send you mail that, you know, states what we're gonna be doing, do you want to have? You know, uh, you know, I feel like we could talk with them and we could come up with some pretty good solutions as to what's easiest for them. Same with the entire community, how do you like to be reached?
Right, and if you, and if you had asked those people, have you found out anything about how they like to be? Because I'll, I'll tell you, the city website, they always say.
It's clunky.
It, it's difficult to navigate and find, you know, it'll be here and it's under this tab and you're going. Oh, I didn't even notice that bef- and it's just big, I mean, it's beautiful, it's got a lot of stuff, but.
But it's for younger people, it's not for older people to have to try to negotiate.
Yeah, well, in that kind of.
And do you see the community doing things that are gonna be of benefit to older people or is it? Moving toward a community like Boulder and saying, this is a young people town, this is young people interests. Young people downtown.
I would, I would say that. Our community is very different than Boulder in general and. If we need to make more. If we need to make it easier for more of our people to get around, then we need to figure out a way to do that, I think. If people are thinking that we're becoming like Boulder, and what do you mean?
Well, there's just a group that even says, don't boulder Grand Junction, so. Obviously, they say that it's becoming like Boulder, well, part of it is the emphasis on, um. Modalities that are not necessarily how ninety percent of the people get around, you know, the. And I know that, like, the urban park, urban trails committee, originally they started when we had the riverfront trail. And they got that and I think as a whole, Grand Junction's, yeah, that's great, you know, you're working on this with the city, you're getting your own grants. You've got people that are donating to this and people were fine and then they said, but, you know, how are we gonna access the trails? From the city, that's a, there's a problem there and probably people don't mind having a biking. But when you start to say, well, you know, now, we need to make sure that the bikers get. Twenty-three percent of the transportation budget, for instance, then people are saying, you know. Opportunity costs, whenever you spend money in one way, you can't spend it in another and there are many people that complain about just. How the roads are maintained, which is a city council function, you get money in your budget from. Your, um, property taxes and you get money from sales taxes and if you still don't have good roads. And you're putting in, um, different projects that save three hundred thousand for a consultant. To decide how we're gonna do a sustainability and adaption plan and then you're gonna spend. One point four million on changing the streets, they're gonna, you know, wait a minute, how about first? You maintain what we have and then if you have excess, then you do the amenities. And I think that that is one of the things that people are going, you, you're not focusing. For instance, Whitman Park, even just the idea of Whitman Park and spending five million dollars on that project. When you're saying there are so many other things is questionable, it, it does, I mean, they're beautiful. It's not anything against any of those, but you're not, first you do the needs and then anything beyond that is a want.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think the city definitely needs to make sure that they're prioritizing the needs of the community first. Before moving into really expensive, I mean, there's just, there's, again, there's challenges because. There are so many things that go into making a community beautiful and useful and we have a homeless population. That do struggle to get around, we have a, we have a VA here, which means we have a lot of veterans, a lot of veterans are disabled. And they have modal needs as well.
There are ways for, I mean, there's, there's plans within the city and the county, the transportation and there's passes and there's. There's quite a bit here that I'm questioning whether or not the city is utilizing what's available. To the best extent.
Yeah, I mean, that's an interesting perspective and I, you know, I've only looked at the budget a handful of times and I haven't dived deep into. Each one of those things and I don't wanna say stats or, you know, facts about things or, cause I don't know if they're facts or not. I don't wanna, I don't wanna say something that's not true, but again, the basics of what city, the city does is to provide. Basics, uh, basic needs and services and our roads, our fire, our police, um. Water, those are all super high on the list and maintaining them should be something that we focus on first.
One last thing on my part and then Ruth can ask her last thing, cause I, I know you're. And we appreciate you, we really do appreciate you coming, um, I noticed that you were, uh, you were endorsed by Conservation Colorado. And they tend to be an activist group more than just saying we need, we need to conserve. They say, there's no plan B and, you know, climate change now, how would your going into city council? Being endorsed by that group and did you receive any funding from them as well?
Um, they were going to, I believe, send some funding or just try and help with volunteer activities, but. Uh, your question is, how am I going to?
How would that reflect in, in what? How would that reflect in in what you see your role as city council because if they're endorsing now you. And they're not endorsing the three opponents of you and Ken and Randall. What is it that they would be expecting from you in your role as a city council member that? Maybe they think the other side would not provide.
Interesting, yeah, well, I have a degree in environmental science with an emphasis on water and so. It's possible that, I mean, and I do care about our water scarcity and our water resources, so that's. That's probably something that they see in me as someone who cares greatly about our water resources here in Colorado. And they probably just wanna see someone on city council who um has, you know. Spoken outwardly about caring about our water resources and the health of our rivers.
So they didn't come and talk to you and say, this is, this is who we are and this is um who. What what we would like to see you being within that, nope, just out of the blue said.
No, I mean, I had an interview with them and and we talked about, you know. What are important issues and water scarcity is always a big one and just, you know, making sure that. There's people on council that care about our resources and wanna make sure that. We're looking at our resources deep into the future to provide for our current residents and future residents.
Okay, but fair enough.
I really don't have anything other, you've answered most of my questions.
Yep, and we appreciate you, this has been Mason County Compass, this is the facts as we see and the truth as we know it, you decide, thank you.